The San Francisco School Board recall Sarah Palin versus the New York Times and the Canadian truckers. I'm Cecily Fernandez and this is the Square Circle. Hello and welcome to the Square Circle. I'm your host Cecily Fernandez. Joining us today are Libertarian Kat Merdy of Feminist for Liberty. Kat, nice to see you.
Thanks for having me on again.
Edwith Theagen of the Center for American Progress. Edwith, great to have you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And Conservative and Newsweek contributing editor Peter Roth. Peter, thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you.
This week in San Francisco, voters recalled three members of their school board, including its president. Here's a story from local station KPIX.
The question voters had to answer was whether to recall three school board members of the San Francisco School Board after proponents say the board failed students during the pandemic by focusing on the idea of renaming schools instead of planning to bring students back to class, then changing the admissions policy at Lowell High School from merit based to a lottery system.
They are so egregiously incompetent. So we need to get them out now and we have, the voters have spoken.
Kat, what do you think the takeaway is for Democrats from this recall?
Well, Cecily, I think that a lot of Democrats have fooled themselves into thinking that the stories that we've been hearing of teachers being of, sorry, of parents being unhappy with education and the way that education is going in this country has been a red versus blue issue that this is right wing parents who are coming out and are just opposed to public school education because they don't like what they see as leftist beliefs. This is San Francisco. These are very progressive. In fact, possibly the bluest of the blue voters in this country and they're coming out and they have a problem with what's happening in the schools. And I think that that's a very important lesson for Democrats here for a number of different things. One, there was a great quote from one of the organizers of the recall election. She said that a good example of this would be if there had been an earthquake in San Francisco, the families were all out on the streets in tents and the San Francisco government came out and said, hey, we're here to help you. We're going to change the names on the street signs, right? This is a point in which American families are struggling. Schools have been closed on and off for almost three years now. There are studies that have come out showing that masks in schools might actually have a lot more problems for students than not. And yet the San Francisco School Board was focused on changing the names of 40 schools for political reasons rather than actually focusing on serving their students. At the same time, they're again pushing these politicized notions of what it means to succeed in education. They were punishing students who were getting into school into a very special school on a merit basis. Instead, trying to switch the system to a lottery system largely because they were worried that there's too many Asian students going to that school. This is at a point at which we've been talking about the hatred that Asian Americans face in this country and the school board is purposely setting up a system to try and keep fewer Asian students from being in a well performing school.
Peter, what do you think? Stop using this as a political football or do you think that Republicans view this as a very rich area for midterms?
Well, I think that the party in power in a number of the lockdown states will suffer. Clearly lockdowns didn't help. Johns Hopkins has a study out that proves that empirically. Masks are of dubious value. There was never a pandemic incident in a public school before they were closed. Parents are angry about masking. They're angry about other things as well, but I think you saw the anti masking, anti elite control of public education manifest itself in the Virginia gubernatorial election. You saw it in New Jersey where a no name former member of the state legislator almost defeated an incumbent Democratic governor. And now you've seen it in San Francisco, which is the ideological center of the Democratic Party today. It's Nancy Pelosi's backyard. It's where the thinking on core issues on social agenda, on economics, technology come from. And even in a place like San Francisco, these three school board members were recalled and it wasn't not just not close, it was three and four to one. And so any Democrat who represents anything close to a center constituency, because San Francisco is probably about as far left as you can get on the left coast. Any Democrat who represents a centrist constituency needs to be very worried. The things that happened in the schools, the way they were closed, the impact that it has had on children's intellectual and social development cannot be undone. And so that's the anchor around the left anchor, the left ankle. And President Biden's poor job performance on core issues like the economy is the anchor around the far left ankle. So I think the Democrats are in for a pasting in the 2022 midterm elections.
Edwith, would you agree with Peter's assessment that the recall in San Francisco is a big warning sign to progressives?
I don't. This has been a deeply challenging period for parents in particular, and we can feel their frustrations. We feel gratitude to the parents and are heartened by everything that they've done for their kids over the past two years. And the fact that the overwhelming number of parents in the South San Francisco area didn't feel like those members of the school board were doing their jobs, that their only priority in the middle of the pandemic should have been to get kids back into school safely and securely. And they got distracted by issues that were hard for parents to take when they're juggling their kids being in and out of school. So changing the names of schools, you know, creating like a whole new lottery system were not the priority for parents. And parents did not feel like they were heard and listened to and that their kids were being prioritized. So their only recourse was to get them out of office. So I don't think that this will be a problem for Democrats nationwide. So overall, I do disagree. As we've heard President Biden say before, when he took office, roughly half of America's students were learning virtually. And according to the latest government data, as of the beginning of February, even after the Omicron surge, nearly 99% of schools are open. So that's good news and that's a trend that's going to be, that should continue. Just one final note, the only reason that schools have reopened safely and that more than 20, 220 million Americans are vaccinated is precisely because of the American Rescue Plan, which also helps support schools with the resources they needed to reopen. So every single Republican in Congress voted against giving parents and schools that support.
Kat, do you think that that will be the way most voters will see things that it was Democrats that have helped enable kids to get back to school? Or do you think that the recall vote indicates that that many voters blame Democrats for kids not returning to schools to in person learning sooner?
I think that there are certainly some voters who do, but I think that we're following a red herring. If we bring this back to Democrats versus Republicans, what this really is, is about families and parents wanting the best education for their students. And I think that school choice is giving families the opportunity to choose the educational system that's the best for them is the way to do that. I think that the Democratic Party unfortunately for a very long time has taken for granted the votes of both people in San Francisco and to a much larger degree, people of color. The district schooling system has been very unfair, particularly to poor people of color. We have de facto segregation in many systems where people of color are not getting as good education. And there's a reason why school choice is overwhelmingly supported to a larger degree by people of color. And I think we've seen that as well in San Francisco with this recall election. We saw a lot of first time voters coming in because their parents who care about their students and a lot of those voters were Asian and Latino. And they were coming in because they opposed what the school board was doing and it wasn't because they're not progressive or because they are progressive. It's not because the Republicans are right wing. It's because they care that their students should get the best possible education. The district schooling system in San Francisco was not offering that. I think that that's something that we're seeing around the country. And I think that these past three years have exposed the cracks in our education system that have existed for a long time. I think it's really vitally important that we just make sure that everybody has the opportunity to choose the schooling that works best for them. That doesn't mean, as some people have unfortunately twisted school choice to mean that we need more book banning or that we need more conservative views on education. What we actually need is for families to be able to find what works best for them, whether that's a mass system, whether that's a non mass system, whether that's a virtual system, whether that's not, depending on the curriculum that works best for them as well. In all cases, choice is better. Using our children's futures as a political football is extremely dangerous and I advise us against it.
Okay. And Peter, do you think that with everything that we've seen over the last few years around education, that in all of this, it looks like school choice is one of the big winners here in that there's been such an increase in parents demanding different choices and even even some momentum for federal dollars to follow students? Do you think this is one of the most major outcomes of the pandemic?
I think we are at a tipping point for educational freedom. Parents are disgusted at the way that certain politicians shut their schools down and how aggressive they were. Remember back at the beginning of the lockdown phase, Mayor de Blasio's war on the Hasidic schools in New York City that didn't want to close, trying to send people to jail for wanting to send their children to school. A lot of this was done at the behest of the teachers unions, which are joined arm in arm with the Democratic Party. They stood in the doorway saying masks now, mask today, mask tomorrow, mask forever. They're the contemporary version of George Wallace. It was, I think, empowering to some Republicans who were afraid of addressing the education issue. But now you see governors like Kim Reynolds in Iowa and Doug Ducey in Arizona and senators like Tim Scott, leading on transferring the flow of money to parents from schools. At least where it's based on the per capita, the per head count. So if there's X thousand dollars goes to school A because your student attends there and you choose to go to school B, whether school B is public, private or parochial, that X thousand dollars will travel with you and go to pay the expense of going to school B, C, or D. That's real progress. And it's not the kind of progress that Democrats can embrace again, because the teachers unions own the Democratic Party. The reason that so many governors ended the business lockdowns immediately and are ending the school lockdowns at the end of the school year is at the behest of the teachers unions. Parents are starting to wake up to that and they don't like it because the parents are the ones who pay the bills.
Edwith, what do you think about that? What do you think about this whole kind of movement towards school choice and the momentum that kind of parents' rights vis a vis education has gained over the pandemic?
I don't think that teachers unions are in cahoots with Democrats either because they definitely have held Democrats accountable. I feel a little confused because I think that there's some context that's sort of missing. I do agree with what Kat made a remark about how the pandemic is just exacerbating already existing cracks within our systems. And I think that prior to this pandemic, the way that schools were funded were basically based on the taxes from the people within the community. So you have to also take a look at redlining segregation and tons of historical context as to how schools are even funded and what kind of money they have. When I was growing up, you literally could cross the street and one school had nothing but brand new Mac computers. And then you cross the other street and the other, they have like textbooks that are falling apart, not because nobody cares about our school systems, but because there's like segregation of finances, because of like so many different systemic things that are at play. So when I think about school choice, it's like, who are we giving choice to, right? Who is allowed to actually pick where their students go to school and what kind of funding that school has? So I look at San Francisco as a great example of parents really standing up and participating in the system and being vocal about what they want for their children. And I see the system really working.
Okay, we'll move on to our next topic. Also this week, former Alaska Governor Sarah Palin lost her suit against the New York Times. Here's a story from CBS News.
A jury has ruled against former Alaska Governor Sarah Palin in her defamation lawsuit against the New York Times. The verdict comes one day after the judges said Palin failed to prove the Times acted with actual malice in regards to a 2017 editorial that incorrectly linked Palin to the 2011 shooting of Congresswoman Gabrielle Giffords. The Times corrected their error within 14 hours of publishing the article, but Palin sued the paper and the author for libel. The jury found there was insufficient evidence to prove the Times defamed Palin.
Peter, I'll start with you. What do you think about this verdict?
I think it's fascinating exercise to watch how this has worked its way through the legal system. The suit was not dismissed on its merits per se. The Times was not found to have not committed a falsehood, but according to the libel standards established by the United States Supreme Court in the landmark case, New York Times v. Sullivan. To libel a public figure, and Sarah Palin qualifies as a public figure. You have to prove that the publication exhibited malice and a reckless disregard for the truth. That's very hard, if not impossible to prove. I think that Governor Palin was libeled. As a working journalist, I would not have written the story the way it was written. I'm for reopening the conversation about libel. It is far too easy. And I am a, I am a strong First Amendment advocate, but I think it's far too easy for lazy reporters to get away with slamming people without doing their research. We saw this repeatedly through the Trump administration, through the proliferation of anonymous stories that were detrimental to Trump and turned out not to be true.
Edwith, what do you think of Sarah Palin's case against the New York Times?
I mean, I think the story is certainly complicated, right? Like there are absolutely mistakes that the Times and James Bennett made in the editorial of Sarah Palin. But also like, as noted, even though she lost the case, but as noted in the New York Times, like her case still may have achieved another aim that she and her lawyer said they had all along. They're basically shining an unflattering light on the process of producing daily journalism. And it's basically making a nudge for the courts to reconsider why the laws set an extremely high bar to prove defamation cases against media outlets. But I think there's also something else to be said, right? About the consistent Trumpian GOP attacks on our core democratic institutions and that they perceive are in their way with little care for the impact of harm to our country.
Okay, Kat, what about you? What do you think about Sarah Palin's case against the New York Times?
As a former working journalist, I think the state of journalistic ethics in this country is at a horrible place. I'm very concerned about how the 24 seven news cycle and increasing polarization of news media has resulted in really honestly, a lot of pushes that we've seen for people to print things as news that are not news. Including in this case where the, where the editorial editor who took the stand and did share that he was pushed to put this kind of language into the story where previously he would have decided against it. But because the New York Times needed more readership, he was pushed to be a little bit edgier in his editing. Now that said, I think the case was decided correctly. The, the line for, the bar for libel should be very high. I too am a huge free speech advocate. It's very important that we be able to express our opinions and that people with a big budget to hire a lawyer not be able to come out and shut people down and stop what could possibly be truths from coming out. The New York Times was able to defend themselves in this case because they are the New York Times. If those, if the qualifications for libel were lowered, it could easily impact, for instance, bloggers or people on social media who many times nowadays are breaking news stories. And they don't have the budgets to be able to defend themselves as the New York Times did. So I do think that we have a problem with the types of stories that are getting printed. We have an increasing problem with stories not being trustworthy and the American public thinks so too. Trust in journalism is falling. I think it's actually at an all time low right now. And the New York Times, I'm sure, is probably taking a hit in its credibility because of this story.
Peter, do you think that this was, that the New York Times took a hit with this story that, you know, as we've seen trust in, in media in general fall? Do you think this was a black eye for the New York Times?
It was another black eye for the New York Times, which has gotten more black eyes than it has eyes. But look, there are, there are two pieces to this that we haven't gotten to. Number one, that in a libel case, truth is always a defense. And so bloggers and other citizen journalists and smaller papers, if their stories are truthful, they have little to worry about. The second is the matter of establishing damage. I don't know that even if Mrs. Palin had won the case, she would have been able to prove that it was damaging or injurious to her reputation. And so they may have found for her if malice could be proven and then awarded a judgment of a dollar. This is, this, this kind of stuff matters.
Finally, this week, Canadian police took some action against what truckers are calling a freedom convoy. Here's Fox Business with a story.
Despite the Prime Minister invoking those extraordinary powers, we haven't seen much of a change here in terms of the posture of the police or the mood of the truckers. They tell us they are staying put. And this comes after we got an update from the Ottawa Police yesterday. They say that the blockade has cost them about $14 million since the beginning, around $800,000 per day. They say there are more than 150 active criminal investigations into the blockade right now. And they've issued 3,000 tickets to people for bylaw violations, like noise violations, idling for too long and having open fires, those kinds of smaller violations. Yesterday, the Ottawa Police Chief resigned. There has been criticism from people who are not participating in this protest that he doesn't, hasn't done enough to break up the protesters.
Edwith, what do you think of Prime Minister Justin Trudeau's handling of the trucker protest?
I think it's an interesting situation. I just want to note as well that nearly 90% of those Canadian truckers are vaccinated. The CEOs of these companies have said by and large that this largely has not been an issue for them. And there are reports showing that this does not seem to be nearly as organic as a grassroots movement as some may have originally thought. And it's very possible that this has come about due to the help of like dark money. So let's be clear, it's also really unacceptable for a radical minority to impose such a high cost on people and their businesses. And this is disrupting people who are trying to earn a living, not to mention the auto industries in two countries, the United States and Canada. So this is having an impact on car plants in the U.S. and as far away as Alabama. So no one should apologize for taking the steps to ensure that more people are vaccinated and that this is truly the key to life beginning to feel normal again.
Kat, what do you think about this issue of the Canadian truckers? Do you think that the Canadian government's response has been, has been fair to the protesters?
I think that this is not a story about vaccines. As Edwith mentioned, over 90% of Canadian truckers are vaccinated, over 80% of Canadians are vaccinated. I think that if we're talking about that, we've missed the story. When Trudeau invoked the Emergencies Act, he raised some incredibly important civil rights questions. I will say, I found it rather ironic that he said that he did so because the Canadian border must remain open when of course the protests started because the border was closed to potentially those who are not vaccinated. However, there, there's just some really big concerns here with the government being able to freeze funding, freeze bank accounts and otherwise shut down people who are protesting against government actions. I want to remove from this story, this idea of whether or not you agree with the truckers, whether or not you agree with vaccinations. I will say I personally am vaccinated and think vaccines save lives. However, I think we will be setting a very dangerous precedent if we say that the government should have the right to freeze bank accounts, to shut people out of the economy because they have opinions or because they attempt to express those opinions that the government does not like.
Peter, what do you think of Trudeau's response to the trucker protest?
I think he's a short man with a Napoleon complex who's proved to be the most dangerous man in North America right now. He's talking about seizing the bank accounts, not just to people who are funding protests, but people who are saying things that are dangerous or considered to be dangerous because of things they have said in the past. That's not democracy, that's fascism. Stalin acts that way. Hitler acts that way. Castro acts that way. That's not democratic. His, his party ought to throw him out on his ear where he belongs. When I hear those truck engines revving, I think I'm hearing the sound of freedom.
Okay, we're going to take some questions from our viewers now. Katie Wheeler asks, given that the school board members were up for reelection in November, was the recall a waste of time and money? So we're going back to the school board. Edwith, you want to take another shot at the school board question?
Yeah, I don't think it was a waste of time and money. They needed to be held accountable. And I think even though that they were up for reelection, it sends a clear message that parents are involved in their student, in their, the lives of their child, and they want to see what's best for them and they'll go to the ends for that.
Okay, Kat, a waste of time or sending a strong message?
I agree with Edwith. Yes, of course, I would have preferred that the public resources that went to this election were able to go into actually educating our students. But this sent a very important message to the school board that parents are not happy with what's going on in San Francisco, as it should be sending messages to school boards around the country. The parents are not happy with the way that their children's interests and what is best for the children has over and over and over again been put below every other interest that comes before the school boards. I think that this is very important that teachers, unions and that local governments are starting to realize that parents and students care about what is happening in the schools and that we need to improve education for all students.
And Peter, again, given that the school board members were up for reelection in November, do you feel it was a waste of time and money?
I think the exercise of the franchise and the function of the democratic process is rarely a waste of time. I do think that the people who most needed to absorb the lesson of these three school board members who were recalled by three to one are the ones least likely to pay attention to it.
Okay, now we'll go to Ron Payne and he asked, do you think the New York Times error was an honest mistake? And Peter, let's stay with you for that one. You think the New York Times made an honest little error in their reporting?
No, I don't. I think they were attempting, I think Kat used the word edgy. They were attempting to be edgy. They were attempting to be provocative. And at, you know, having been in many newsrooms over the course of my life, conservative politicians are treated like conservative politicians are treated like clay pigeons at a skeet shoot. And so you really don't have to, to hold back from the invective. And again, I think that's been, it's cautioned the, the political discussion, and it's been damaging to the democratic process, and it's been damaging to the free speech movement.
Okay. Edwith, you think the New York Times, their error was an honest mistake?
I don't think it was an honest mistake. I agree with some of what Peter said and also what Kat said earlier in her remarks that they wanted to be edgy and they wanted to get more like to up their readership. I mean, newspaper readership is falling, so they were doing what they could. So was it a good mistake? No. No, I think it was, but it was a mistake.
Okay. And Kat, I'll give you the last shot at this one in the New York Times, honest mistake?
I would not use that term. I do not think that it was a knowing lie, but I do think that it was a politicized overexaggeration that was made because of business practices at the New York Times and at other major media stations now, media publishers and stations now that are forcing journalists to compromise their ethics in order to get more clicks.
Okay, and if it's all right, I'm going to stay with you for the most underreported story of the week. Kat, do you have a story for us?
I do. There is a very disturbing story out of San Francisco, California this week. The San Francisco Police Department arrested a woman using DNA evidence that they had collected, not during, not while investigating the crime for which she was arrested, but rather from a rape kit which she had submitted several years previously. There is no news on whether they did anything to ever actually arrest and prosecute her rapist, however. I think that this is very worrisome. There are over 100,000 untested rape kits in this country, over 13,000 in California alone. San Francisco Police Department is one of the very few police departments that claims that they have zero untested rape kits. But if the reason that they're testing their rape kits is so that they can use it as evidence against the women and men who are coming forward against, against their assault assailants, that's very concerning, particularly since many, if not the majority, of sexual assault victims already do not seek, seek legal justice, both because rape kits themselves are very invasive and dehumanizing, particularly after a, such a horrible thing as rape, but also because of news of how these rape kits are not used in order to actually prosecute rape. And I think that this is a huge blow for rule of law and justice in this country.
Okay. Peter, what about you? What's your most underreported story of the week?
Well, Cecily, remember at the beginning of the COVID outbreak, there was a declaration produced called the Great Barrington Declaration. It was signed by a number of eminent public health experts around the United States who said, let's not do the lockdowns. Let's use the traditional public health approach, identify the most vulnerable people, isolate them, and go on with business as usual, washing hands, doing the other things that are necessary, but no lockdowns? Well, there's a professor at Stanford University, John Ioannidis, I think his name is. And if I pronounce it wrong, I apologize, but he's a data scientist. And he's come out with a new study that demonstrates how Anthony Fauci and Francis Collins, who was the head of the National Institutes of Health and who has just been appointed the interim science advisor to President Joe Biden, scheme to discredit what they call fringe epidemiologists who were promoting the Barrington Declaration. It was struck down from social media. Promotion of the Barrington Declaration was used as an excuse to erase Facebook posts and to take down Twitter accounts. And it turns out that the advice given in the Barrington Declaration was correct. And what we are learning is that much of the advice given by Fauci and Collins and others who were on the approved list, as defined by the media, were wrong.
Okay, we'll be watching for that, more on that. Edwith, what about you? Do you have a most underreported story of the week for us?
Yeah, I'm originally from Florida, and recently the Florida House just passed a 15-week abortion ban. So that's really disheartening, that another attack on our reproductive rights. The bill also does not allow for any exceptions of rape or incest. And the only exception for the bill would be to save a woman's life or physical impairment to the mother. But, you know, it's really disappointing. I don't know what it's going to take for us to protect our reproductive rights. Also, as folks are probably aware of, there's a court case within SCOTUS that can also impact access to reproductive rights. So it's a lot of scary stuff.
Okay, well, everybody watching the courts very closely. And that's all the time we have for this edition of The Square Circle. Thanks to our guests and thanks to all of you for watching or listening to The Square Circle. I'm Cecily Fernandez. Please subscribe to our channel and like this video or give it a five-star rating on your podcast platform. We'll see you next week.